Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore, absent. Alderman Penleyon, absent. Alderman Marsh, absent. Alderman Schoenhyder, absent. Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Acting Chairman Adelman.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Five present, four absent. Acting Chairman, we have a quorum.
Great. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 2nd, 2012 Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Second.
Nobody's got any corrections or deletions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third item on our agenda is the Deerpath Golf Course update from the Golf Advisory Committee and Kemper Sports Management. Before we get into that, let me just briefly refresh everyone's memory that about a year or so ago, the city pondered whether to privatize the golf course operations. And the mayor and city manager appointed a committee. Alderman Marsh served on it, Alderman Waldeck, Kurt Boltman from Parks and Rec, and I don't recall who else. And public meetings were held and the public gave their input as to whether we should privatize or not. And based on substantial consideration, the determination was made not to privatize, but to bring in a general manager from outside the City of Lake Forest. Subsequently, that committee was disbanded and a golf course advisory committee was established consisting of nine members from the community, myself included, Mary Van Arsdale, Jeff Wade, and Kemper Sports, who was ultimately selected to provide outside general management. I've got several comments I'd like to make, but I'm going to save them. I don't want to preempt the presentation by Jeffrey Wade. So without any further ado, Jeff, take it away.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Jeff Wade. I am the Superintendent of Special Facilities for the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm here to introduce two presenters to you for an update of the Deerpath Golf Course. The first presenter is Rick Walrath, the General Manager and Kemper Sports Management employee. Rick oversees all clubhouse operations and will provide an overview of changes in course performance since Kemper Sports assumed management of the clubhouse. The second presenter is Gary Chan. Gary is the Chair of the Golf Advisory Committee and will provide an overview of the work the committee has done since the first meeting in December. I just want to take a moment and say that it's been a wonderful experience working with Gary and Kemper and all the other members of the Golf Advisory, and I know that collectively we will put Deerpath on a stronger financial foundation for the future. So with that, I'd like to bring up Rick Walrath.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you. Good evening. I'm going to run through a few brief slides, but I'd like to start off by thanking the City of Lake Forest for the opportunity, and I think that it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful relationship going forward. I'd like to also briefly introduce two members of the Kemper Sports Management team who are in support of me on a daily basis. Our Regional Director of Operations, John Erickson, and our Regional Director of Marketing and Sales, Brendan McCarthy. Both of these gentlemen help me on a daily basis to continue to help grow things at Deerpath. So I'll begin by telling you briefly a little bit about myself. My professional background is 11 years in the building materials retail industry, which you can see dovetails just directly into running golf courses. I had a change in career, as many folks do, and nine years ago, I think this is my ninth year now, chose the golf professional business as where I wanted to excel forward. I wanted to make sure that I was in a business for the remainder of my working years in doing something that I loved. I was retained by Kemper Sports in December of last fall specifically for this position. And for those of you to expand a little bit on Mr. Adelman's comments, Kemper is a local company based in Northbrook, and they're led by a local Lake Forest resident as well. So it's a nice tie-in to keeping things local. My professional history in golf, work history, two years as a general manager and head golf professional at a public facility in Menominee, Michigan, and two years as the head professional at Windstone Golf Club in North Barrington, and then three years as an assistant in Crystal Lake, Illinois, and two years as assistant in Gilbert, Arizona. So a nice variety in my background of both public and private golf courses, as well as some very similar facilities to our current facility, Deerpath. One of the things that was very important to us when we started looking at this season was to retain the key staff members. In this particular scenario at Deerpath, we retained all the staff members from last year. And a couple that I'd like to highlight on, there's three separate employees, Pat, Gary, Bob McPhail, and Larry Utley. They've all been here since in the '90s, so you're talking 1999, 1997. So significant history with the course, and it really helps promote what Gary will get into in the marketing presentation a little bit more, of a feel of a club. Even though it's a public facility, it feels like my club. And you'll begin to see that, you'll begin to see that phraseology in that tag, "My Club is Deerpath," repeatedly through our communiques and our advertising. And retaining the key staff really was a part of keeping that feel. The other key operational staff that was brought on board is a young man by the name Josh Weaver. If any of you are familiar with Noel Wood, he was an assistant at Noel Wood for the last three seasons, as well as working in wintertime as assistant at Red Stick in Vero Beach, Florida. And he had the distinct opportunity for three seasons, 2009, 10, and 11, to be a tournament assistant in the golf shop at Augusta National during the Masters Tournament. So that brought some unique skill sets to Deerpath that I think we're really going to enjoy, and it's just a great experience. So any of you golf fans that want to talk Augusta, Josh is definitely your guy. Delving a little bit into the financial update, the first quarter of the year's passed and the golf season started significantly earlier than normal, which was wonderful for those of us that love to play. Some of the information you'll see highlighted there, some significant variances over 2011. A portion of that has to do with an earlier start of weather. A portion of that also has to do with realigning with some of our focuses, where we want to try to improve, where we want to try to expand. A perfect example of that is in the merchandise category. One of the specialties that I have as a certified professional with the PGA is in retail operations. So I brought in a broader breadth of merchandise and deeper lines, as well as did a little bit of training and dovetailing nicely. That was having an assistant like Josh who does know a lot about merchandise and merchandising operations. So you can see a significant increase over last year in golf shop merchandise, as well as improving the merchandise cost of sales. So we're actually putting more of the dollars that we receive in merchandise to the bottom line as well. One of the things that we want to focus on as a management team is we want to focus on the big three areas going forward for this season, which are greens fees, that's your daily fee play, merchandise sales, and membership dollars. So those big three areas are key to driving the revenue, and Gary will touch more on those in the report on the Golf Advisory Committee. You'll see a little bit more information here on rounds, and one of the things that will jump off the page at you is the red highlight of rounds versus last year and other rounds daily fee. Last year, there was a program of putting greens fees online at a coupon site where basically you can log on, look up Deerpath, and then print a coupon for a discounted rate at specific times. One of the things that we wanted to take charge of is we wanted to make sure that we owned the pricing at the facility. So if you're getting the best value, if you're getting a sale or a deal, we want to own that at our website. So there is a website renovation going on, and currently, if you're looking for the lowest price or the best value to play at Deerpath, it will be on our website. You can see how having that added traffic to our website can help us drive some things in other areas. So that is a significant change. We're not printing the coupons, but we'll realize that in the daily fee rounds of residents and non-residents for the remainder of the season. Membership is one of the highest revenue-driving areas of our facility, and what we've targeted is a goal for this year of 400. And you can see we're ahead of last year's pace through the end of April, and we've added some more in May, so we are well on target. We're ahead of last year's membership sales in count, and we will also be really closing in our goal of 400 total members for the season, hopefully in the very near future. One of the unique things with Kemper Sports is they have a proprietary customer service training, and we've begun that process at Deerpath, and we'll expand on it throughout the years. They've developed a program they call True Service, and the details are vast, and what they're really trying to do is get the folks who work at a facility to take ownership of the customer service. And they have five core principles of being genuine and helpful, your attitude is your responsibility, the customer, to the customer, everything matters, and service is a team sport, customer happiness is everything. That's the general goal. So it's something that we're going to begin to introduce. I've been put through the program, began to put through the program, and really just believe that it's going to be able for us to take customer service at Deerpath to the next level and really promote the feel that this is your club. When you show up as a daily fee player, when you show up as a member, your club is Deerpath, and the customer service will let you know why. A couple of highlights on improvements for this season. We installed a new point-of-sale software to be able to track data a lot more efficiently and effectively. I offer specials on the website, as I mentioned earlier, for tee times, and the system that we have now allows me to target time blocks even down to the hour where we are having availability to discount and possibly get a little more play in historically slow times. If you can really identify by the day and by the hour, when are your lowest times, then you know when you want to drive that traffic. It's very easy to sell tee times on Saturday and Sunday morning. That's the easiest part of the golf business. Trying to sell them at your more difficult times, at the slower times of day is when you've got to get a little more creative. Our new software, Easy Links, is really going to allow us to track customer segments and the revenue produced by those segments. We are expanding on the starter program. We're going to try to have a starter, as I'm pretending to be in that wonderful photo. We're going to try to have a starter on during almost all times. What that does is it gives a nice greeting, it gives a nice welcome to the golf course. Any new players who might be unfamiliar and have some hesitation towards the golf course or the experience in general can feel welcomed. And then it also keeps people on track. For those of you who do golf, pace of play is an issue at any facility, and you want to make sure that people are moving through the golf course at the correct speed. Golf does take a lot of time. That's one of the major challenges in the industry, is folks don't have five or six or seven hours to dedicate in one afternoon. So keeping it down to four hours and under, which is extremely doable at our facility, is really critical. And having a starter on staff and on the job during those peak times is really going to help improve that. And then again, I mentioned on the customer service training, that's really going to allow us to keep things flowing on the golf course as well. We did do a golf shop renovation. I've got a couple of photographs. This one is pre-renovation, fully stocked in, I believe it was either 2010 or 2011. And one of the things that we wanted to do, as you kind of look around and take a stock of what we have there, the physical attributes didn't change dramatically. We were able to leverage the Kemper relationship and obtain the wooden fixtures you see at literally pennies on the dollar. We've changed some lighting, we've added a little color in there, as you can see on the back wall, and we're looking for a little more inviting feeling, a little more warm feeling. We had ambient lighting to replace the track lighting so that you get a more general light across all of the merchandise versus the spots, which can be harsh. And what we're really looking for is a better traffic flow and a warm, inviting feeling. This renovation was done hand-in-hand with Kemper. They're experts in merchandise, and their corporate folks are here to help and advise me on what we should get and where we should place things. So it really was a wonderful team effort that was guided by Kemper's relationship and allowing us to attain a lot of these fixtures. The Quarter One marketing update, we're looking at different strategies and tactics to help us grow those big three areas I'd mentioned earlier, the greens fees, the merchandise, and the membership. And the Golf Advisory Committee had developed, in coordination with Kemper, and some other city officials, brought forward some brand standards for consistent brand recognition. And you'll see these colors, although they're a little bit bled out on the big screen there, it's kind of a royal blue and a gold, the very familiar Lake Forest colors. And you're going to see those consistently throughout all of the information that we put out. You'll also see the logo, and you'll see that tag of "My Club is Deerpath." Those are things we want to use consistently to give everybody a reminder that our, "My Club is Deerpath," and you can recognize those colors and associate them with our facility. Gary's going to expand on those a little bit deeper. One thing I do want to point out is we have just began a transition in contacting our customer base from a basis of every two to three weeks to a weekly basis. One of the plans we came up with in marketing was during the golf season, to keep us front of mind, we're going to contact our regular play database once a week with highlight information. And then when you get into the shoulder seasons where it's not as much golf being played, we'll go to every other week. And then during the off-season, of course, we'll just touch them once or twice to keep them updated on any changes in the facility. This will be the new website, which we hope to have active in very short order, and the website itself is much cleaner, much easier to navigate. The three main areas, which you can even see from this far away, are our three main revenue drivers, the golf academy, the online tee times, and then annual passes. Those are three things that make up a bulk of our revenue, and we wanted to keep those central to the new webpage, website main page. You also see in the bottom-left corner, there is an area for current content. That'll be the, those will be the items that'll be updated on a regular basis to keep folks up to date on what's happening this week and today at Deerpath. This is an actual view of our online tee time inventory. That's a change from the past. You used to ask for a reservation when you tried to book online at Deerpath, and then you'd get a confirmation of when your tee time would be. In this scenario, you can actually pick two, three, four players on the exact day and at the exact time that you like. I control all of the prices, how many are shown available, so you can really put a presentation out there of, "We have some value to be seen." If you have an entire page full of $29 or $39 rates, you're just showing that you're a cost-driven course. If you only show one or two times with that low rate, it's going to drive the customer to believe that that's a special bargain and make them more apt to reserve that time. So that's a wonderful feature that is really growing exponentially on a weekly basis since we've made it available in the last few weeks. And finally, I'd like to sum up my portion by saying that myself, in particular, and Kemper Sports, are proud to partner with the city and the Golf Advisory Committee, and we think that with the team of Kemper Sports, the City of Lake Forest, the Golf Advisory Committee, we're all going to work together around our course, around our logo, and really enhance the customer experience. Because if we can enhance the customer experience, that's truly the key to our long-term success as a golf course. I'll be available afterwards, obviously, for plenty of questions, and I'd like to hand it over now to Gary Chan.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening. I'm honored to be here and have the opportunity to represent the Golf Advisory Committee. And I also have the pleasure to really spend over the next 10 minutes to communicate to you, first, who we are, what our mission is, what we've accomplished to date, and some thoughts about future plans. So this is who we are. Nine members, as you mentioned, but very importantly, we are working with the City of Lake Forest staff, as well as with Kemper, and we see ourselves as one complete team. I would say the members of the Advisory Committee are a really excellent mix of experiences, perspectives, as well as skills. I myself, I have a financial skill. I probably have very little marketing skill, but thank goodness there are all the folks on there that have what I lack, and together we make a great team. Let me just remind everyone in the room what our mission is. And first of all, is we need to review and analyze and provide input into the development and recommendations of plans pertaining to three major planks: programs and services, marketing, and in the end, how do we measure success, benchmarking and goals. Two other very important functions of the Golf Advisory Committee is to be a conduit function for the community, for us to communicate to the community and for the community to communicate back to us about what they're seeing, how they're feeling, and giving us feedback so it can come back to the city. And to be an advocacy function, to be out there and promoting all the positives that have transpired over the past many months. So we started in December, had a very concentrated work effort, especially the first two to three months, meeting weekly, bi-weekly, across those three planks of programs and services, marketing, and benchmarking goals. What have we accomplished? In marketing, I can truly say we've accomplished and we've delivered our goals. I think we're satisfied. Branding is critical. What is the message to our community? "My Club is Deerpath," is that special feeling when a resident of Lake Forest or a non-resident comes in and feels like this is a club, that they are welcomed, that they are a member of, part of the community. You can see, I hope you had a chance, see there's increased signage of Deerpath throughout the community in many of the areas and be more prominent out there. We've implemented some new programs, a new member referral program whereby folks that would join a membership and then as a give back to nonprofits, we provide a foursome as well as a gift certificate that the nonprofit organization could use for themselves to raise funds. And I think that was a terrific idea. Another program, Make Mondays Matter. So folks who play on Monday, they can sign on and then says, you know, "I'd like a couple dollars," as I play around to contribute to the nonprofit organization of their choice. Again, the sense of building a community of our golf course and what it means to the community, be part of the community. A big thing is email campaigns. You know, in the past, we've done a lot of paper mailing, and first, it's expensive, it's not very efficient, and I would say it's not the best use of our funds. And we've really, really upped the email campaign from degree of frequency, content, and breadth. And we're just getting started. I think there's a lot of potential for us to continue to drive hard in this area. Increased publicity, we're more prominent out there in the local cable shows, as well as in gazebo and patch. You know, our goal, kiddingly, say we want to make Rick the most photographed pro on the North Shore. And we'll keep tracking, we'll keep that as a goal. And as you can see, and we'll have a chance weeks from now when it goes live, the website is vastly, vastly improved from what it offers and how it describes the course to the reader. So those are the marketing programs. Then programs and services. We, the Advisory Committee, working with the whole team, we have a full calendar of events. And, you know, it's for both members and non-members, as well as, you can see, we have three golf demo days, we have holiday events on Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, and very importantly, family events. Again, back to "My Club is Deerpath" community. Parent-child event, mixed couples events, Family Day, we're going to have Chip Beck, a pro, as part of a sponsorship. I think the date is August 12th. In fact, I think we've got an interview set up that Chip is participating in promoting the event to the community. We have rider-type competitions within the club itself, and I think versus Lake Bluff, which we better win. And we're expanding the Thursday Golf League, and the Deerpath management is administering that, so it facilitates it for the folks that are participating. We're expanding that and gain more participation, especially during an off day, like a Thursday, getting more folks out on the course. And Deerpath Golf Academy, again, linking the, you know, folks coming out, taking lessons, being part of the club. And I've had folks come up to me and, you know, what Richard Franklin has done and the technology that he has bought. I mean, one member said, "My swing is just so much better now." So I think we're offering quite a bit to our members now than we had in the past. And lastly, we need to measure success. So throughout the year, we're going to be tracking this. First, obviously, the measures of ultimate success of a golf course is the number of rounds, the average daily fee rate that we get when we actually sell a round. We don't want to sell so much promotional rounds because, you know, we don't want to cheapen the image. It's very important for us to have the right balance. The number of memberships, obviously, is very important to us. Total revenue expenses and operating income, being a financial person. But very importantly, the second thought is beyond that, is we need, want to have operational benchmarks. How well are we operating, efficiently, effectively? So practice range revenue, are we generating enough there? Golf shop merchandise per round. Cart revenue and utilization, are we generating enough out of that? The number of lessons that we're providing to the community, as well as how much food and beverage revenue we're getting in per round. So we set out specific goals in the year. We wanted to increase membership year-over-year, plus 22. We're not quite there. We would hope that we continue to work on this. We want to get the rounds up, 1,300 versus prior year. We'll see. We think we got the right programs. We set an aggressive goal. We'll keep pushing at it. As I mentioned, we'll keep tracking it, monthly. So, you know, I would just say this, on future thoughts, the team of Kemper, Lake Forest, and the Advisory Committee, I think is a big win for everyone. Truly is a big win. I think the community, our members, feel like they have a voice to come to us and convey how they think. You know, I would be putting on the 10th green and someone coming to me and says, "Gary, you know, this is why I'm thinking about how things are." Not all positive, but it's feedback, and we need to take that feedback and listen. So what's the future? If you were to ask me, I'd say definitely for another year, we should have the Advisory Committee. We need to track our results of the programs that we have implemented and how the golf course is performing. We need to, importantly, this year, start in September. Again, thinking about modifying the programs that are already in place, as well as getting ahead of the game and developing a pipeline of new ideas, of marketing and getting programs and services out to our community. So in the end, I just want to thank everyone. It's really, truly an honor for me to be, have an opportunity to serve Lake Forest in this capacity. And I look forward to, I firmly believe, a solid, successful start for Deerpath Golf Advisory Committee and building a solid foundation for Deerpath Golf Course. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. I have a couple of comments of my own I'd like to add, but before I do, are there any questions the council has of either Rick, or Gary, or Jeff Wade?
Just a curiosity. And, you know, again, it's just on numbers, and the numbers all seem positive. You know, it's, of course, enhanced by the favorable weather, which is maybe a good sign for all coming in, a happy environment. I noticed that the backbone of the club, the membership numbers, actually have increased, which is great, especially with the economy and the transition. But strangely, the revenue incomes down, so I'm trying to figure, wait a second, how's that?
You're exactly correct. One of the things that we took out as far as a program this year was to try to drive more junior memberships and more interaction with junior golf-related people. And in that particular scenario, Lake Forest Country Day School and Deerpath have developed a relationship where as we brought on 41 students, and they have a partial year membership. So during this portion of the year, during the springtime portion, they paid a prorated membership amount, but then their membership will expire at a specific point during the season as well. We have that same sort of a program in place with Lake Forest Academy in the fall. So you'll see the number to number, as far as comparing this year to last year, number of memberships will be at or above, and the membership actual revenue, we're still going to push to get to the budgeted number, but it may take more, to your point, it may take more actual memberships to get to that number.
But great, though, getting younger players involved is kind of the backbone of the game to get them anxious. Aside from the number of rounds played by the Adelman family... Get them anxious, aside from the number of rounds played by the Edelman family. But no, that's only good news.
Very good.
Positive explanation.
Hey Rick, while you're up there, can I just ask you to give us a broader view of the golf industry, both in Illinois and across the country? And what does Kemper see for the future of golf?
Sure. One of the most exciting things, if you take a, a big step backwards for golf, is the main organizations in, in the game of golf, USGA, PGA, Golf Course Superintendent, Golf Course Owners Association, have all gotten together and they've created a project called Golf 2.0. If any of you are in the golf area or read any of the magazines, you've probably seen it off and on. It dovetails in with the PGA's old program of Play Golf America. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to get folks excited about golf and all that it has to offer. And they're working with facilities like ours. And I've met with the regional player representative, player development representative from the PGA. Jeff and I met with Frank Heppa a few weeks ago. They're trying to develop more players. Golf, the number of golfers, as you've all heard of it over the course of time, is slowly reducing, rounds of players slowly reducing. There's an overabundance of golf course stills. But trying to refocus on the folks that play golf, getting them to play one extra time. Your core golfers, your Mike Edelmanns of world, they're gonna play the rounds that they're gonna play. They're in love with the game. The folks who play a handful of times a year, trying to get them increased. Richard is doing a beginner clinic this week for ladies in particular. He did, excuse me, last week. We're gonna have programs in the future, the Family Day. We're having a parent-child event. These are all things to try to introduce new players to the game or bring some old players back into the game. So the economy's beginning to, beginning to turn. I think that everything's a little more positive. Golf courses in general, the, the bleeding has stopped. You're not seeing the amount of closures you had in the past. There's even been a few purchases now and then, even in this area. Bull Valley Golf Club was just purchased a few weeks ago by a local company as well, Raybine Group. So I, I think that it's coming up off the bottom and I think it's an exciting time to be interested in the golf business.
Thank you.
I have a, more of a comment or an observation than a question. Whoever thought of this branding, My Club is Deer Path is a genius. I, I think, I think it's terrific. I, when I was working on the golf committee, I heard time and time and time again from the members of Deer Path that why it was so special and so unique was that it really was like a little country club. So the fact that you were able to come in and recognize that and build upon and capitalize upon it, I, I, I think it's terrific and it's, it's a great idea. And then just a question, how is feedback from the members elicited or handled as advisory committee meeting with members or do they just grab them on the golf course?
I can be, I can speak to my portion of it. Everybody is very free with their comments and advice on a regular basis and I've made this at, at all my facilities, I've made a running joke that if I had a nickel for every time, somebody pulled me aside and said, what you gotta do is, and fill in the blank from there. All very positive comments. I've, I had nothing but good feedback. Gary maybe can speak a little bit more to how he's approached, but nothing but positive comments so far and a lot of good, solid input as well.
I think one thought, we'll, we'll have our next meeting in June, is it's a bit early to go out and ask for formal feedback because the season's still, so, so early, is to then work with the golf advisory committees, is how do we get formal feedback? You know, we thought about perhaps a, a feedback sheet survey in the clubhouse, you know, we're on the website, feedback can be gotten that way. So I think once June comes around and the golf course is in full swing, I, I personally believe it's the right time to ask for how things are going. You know, how do you feel about the overall facility, the service and, and overall, what other suggestions you may have for us going into the future?
Thank you.
As a follow-up on your, your feedback, part of the point-of-sale system that we now have, not only allows us to, to market directly off that and contact the customer base, but if you've played around the golf at our facility, given us your information and your email, you will receive, you will receive a, a short five-question survey. It's part of Kemper's program, they call it True Review Program. And it'll allow you to give your feedback in, in five specific areas and they track that. And once they, once you begin to compile that information, they're in contact with me on a very regular basis about how those comments are coming back in and how the golf course and the golf experience is being rated by the customers.
Any other questions? I'd just like to add some comments of my own. First of all, it, it really is way early in the season. We got spoiled by the last two weeks of March with beautiful 80-degree weather and now we're back to normal spring weather. April was pretty normal and not conducive to getting out there to play a lot of golf. First, I'd like to thank Gary Chan for chairing the golf advisory committee and I'd like to thank everybody who was on the golf advisory committee, including Mary and Jeff and Brendan and everyone from Kemper. The, the committee was tremendous in the creativity and the ideas they came up with. So much so that really, I think, Rick and Kemper had to rein us in to be realistic, how much can we do in this first year of transition? And I think maybe a third of the ideas that we came up with, we decided that's for 2013. And the trend in golf for the last 11, 12 years has been down and it's like trying to stop a locomotive and reverse direction and I think we're on the right course to do that. Alderman Waldeck, you really keyed in on Deer Path is my golf course feeling because it really is working. I have a couple friends who've already told me, they get the emails once a week and they love it and they, they feel like it's their golf course. And I'd like to encourage everybody, whether you play golf or not, they've got these great Deer Path Golf Course hats. And the apparel merchandise with the Deer Path logo is really spectacular. The pricing of the merchandise is extremely competitive and not that I'm trying to single-handedly boost revenues, but I just ordered a, a set of irons from Rick for as good a price, if not better, than I could get at Golf Galaxy or Golf Smith, whatever.
And that'll take five strokes off your game, too.
We'll find out about that. The, the instruction component, the golf teaching over there, I've never seen so many kids with a zeal for playing golf. And these are the future season members at Deer Path, unless they end up at Onwensia or Conway. But the program has just exploded and it's great to see all the young blood over at the golf course. Last fall, I heard a fair amount of skepticism from the old-time golfers who were longtime members there and they love Chris, everybody loves Chris. I think they're gonna fall in love with Rick as well because a lot of those skeptics now are becoming converts. They're getting their religion. They've been out there, they see what's going on, they see the transformation in, in the pro shop. And I, I think they're pleasantly surprised. So again, this is real new for this year because we're only six weeks into the golfing season. But the feeling I'm getting is very, very positive. And whether or not we reverse the trend in revenues, if we didn't take this course of action, I can't imagine how much more adverse the numbers would be.
I'll just briefly make a comment. I think the council is so lucky to have you, Mike, on the advisory committee because you're so excited about it. I think that's wonderful. And Kathy, congrats to you on being part of making that happen with Kemper.
And you too.
And then one more comment, Steve Skinner was referred to not by name, but as someone who happens to work for Kemper and happens to live in Lake Forest. He's the president of Kemper Sports and he's back there in the back of the room. So thanks, Steve, for taking a close watch on this project and I know you'll make sure it's successful.
Any other comments or questions? Then we'll move on to agenda item number four, the Transportation Enhancement Safety Committee update presented by Assistant City Manager Karina Walters.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. Tonight I just wanted to provide a brief overview of what are the last couple of action steps and items that the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee has completed. The group hadn't met for about a year and we regrouped in April as a result of the recent tragedies. But really, the group wanted to get together to see, there are a number of initiatives already happening within the community and to see if there was anything else that this group should also be doing in conjunction with. As a result, we met the 26th of April with Union Pacific and Metra to really brainstorm and identify educational engineering and enforcement opportunities. And what that led us to do was to walk the railroad tracks on May 3rd. So what we did is Metra, Union Pacific and the city, there was a total of 12 of us. Six of us really observed behavior at the depot and really observed what the commuters were doing. Were they crossing when the lights were still flashing? Were they going around the gates? Just to really observe what the concerns were and to bring them back to the group. The second group walked basically the bike path and the right-of-way from Woodland Road north up just past the high school. After the group completed the walk, we met and identified some brainstorming ideas and potential action steps to follow up on. And one of the groups that actually walked from Woodland North identified that there is a portion of fencing that we're missing and then there's, then there is fencing and then there is not fencing from the high school north. So an action item is to identify the total amount of fencing that would be needed, identify some costs and to see if we could install a fence really from Woodland all the way up past the high school to really deter residents, to deter bike path users, to deter students from crossing the railroad tracks. I'll actually have a few slides of pictures to kind of show you a little bit more of what one of the groups found. Another opportunity is on June 5th, the, there will be a train that will be stopping in Lake Forest. And what we're, the goal of that is to send out notification to the community to see who would be interested in taking that train. It would be an educational opportunity regarding safety enhancement. Another action item is Metra needs to synchronize the express train announcements. So I'm not sure if any of you have heard it, but clearly what happens is when the express train is buzzing through the depot, you hear the announcement at that time saying, this is an express train, it does not stop. So there's clearly a timing issue that needs to be reviewed and Metra's looking to modify The, the group that actually walked the, the bike path and right-of-way, this is an area, this is part of the bike path that if you look east to the high school. What's happening is there are bikers, there are students that are cutting through and you'll see this is clearly a little path. You'll see the dirt mark that individuals are taking from that bike path and they're taking them to the railroad tracks. And clearly, there's signage here that indicates that there should not be any trespassing on the right-of-way, which individuals are clearly ignoring. So they're crossing the train tracks. This is kind of, you can see the carved-out portion where they're crossing. They're crossing over the railroad tracks and you can see some of the path here. And it's leading them to either businesses or condos. And from what we understand, there might be businesses or condos that are allowing students or essentially students to park their vehicles at either businesses or the condos and, which is allowing them to walk across the tracks. So the group really wanted to get together. We, we showed you some of the, the issues that we've seen. We're really trying to clean up as well as enhance the safety in the area. So another option that came from the group is to have the northbound train that is actually going northbound block the Westminster Street a little bit more. So that will deter individuals from going around the tracks. Another option is for the removal or closing of the pedestrian at-grade crossing at the East Depot. As I mentioned earlier, residents and businesses might be allowing some students to park in their parking lots, which is allowing them to cross the railroad tracks. And what we're gonna do is, Union Pacific and the city of Lake Forest in conjunction is writing a letter to see if we can appropriately educate and, and remind them that this is behavior that should be deterred. Another opportunity is, another public education opportunity, is the Union Pacific will perform station audits for signage, reminding individuals that the state law, that people shouldn't be crossing the tracks when bells are ringing and when the lights are flashing. The Union Pacific is going to also identify and develop plans to block access where individuals might be trespassing to the right-of-way. Another opportunity is for the Train Safety Week to happen again in August prior to the start of school. If you recall, we had a Train Safety Week probably about a year ago. And basically, we had police personnel, we had Operation Lifesaver, we had Metra personnel at both train stations, reminding individuals not to be crossing the tracks when the bells are ringing and also advising them if they do, what are the potential issues that could happen? When, and what I mean by issue is citations. Really, we haven't issued any citations at either of the train stations, but that might be an opportunity to look forward to. Our group will again meet in approximately three weeks to see how we can continue to move forward and to see and provide the recommendations to the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, which will ultimately probably be coming up in front of the city council. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, this one I actually do. Yesterday, a thought came on as I was running down the bike path going towards Old Elm Road and seeing kids go off the tracks. The dilemma Lake Forest has on the east line train tracks, at least as far as access to the bike path goes, is there's no entrance to the bike path from Old Elm Road all the way to Ryan. And you have a large concentration of homes to the west of the tracks that has absolutely no access to the bike path. And it's not a concentrated amount, but to get there, yeah, I mean, there's only one way and it's to go over the tracks. So, yeah, on occasion, when I see kids cutting over, it, it kind of makes sense. We've made no area that you could get across the tracks or under the tracks to access the bike path in that area, nor the high school. For that matter, there's large expanses as compared to, say, Highland Park or Highwood when there's maybe about five, six blocks, but then there's a crossing, there's no access in this area. And I, I don't know, maybe there's a program where you could access maybe some type of grant funds or something for pedestrian underpass, but I would think it would be sorely needed and it would help on the bicycle transportation program to have some intermediate area to access the bike path at least south in Lake Forest and possibly by the high school. Because human nature is just to take the shortest route between two points. Also, in my experience as a pedestrian, the trains normally don't block Deer Path Road when they stop going northbound. And following the stream of pedestrians who are getting off the train and accessing the parking lots, you know, it's just human nature. If you see a train kind of sitting still, about half the people are crossing, going over, going eastbound. And maybe as, as far as Westminster, the same problem exists towards Deer Path and crossing the, the intersection to keep people from going because they do.
So you're observing the behavior of the lights are flashing, the gates are down and people are crossing?
Yeah. As you're going northbound, the train doesn't block Deer Path and everyone just crosses.
Mm-hmm.
And I feel guilty, I know better at this point, but certainly no one's gonna follow my example.
And that might be an educational opportunity where Operation Lifesaver police are actually out there during the heavy pedestrian times to remind them that you shouldn't be crossing. If, if we need to also take it a step further to actually issue citations because clearly If we need to also take it a step further to actually issue citations, because clearly, as you indicated, it's happening. And the question is, how do you deter that? And if an opportunity for deterrence is to issue citations, and I'm not saying that's the best option, but clearly, that might be one.
Yeah.
And regarding your previous statement, we can look at, see if there's grant opportunities, see if there's other ways that we can have the bike access, to really look at it.
And it takes a lot of money, I know that, but...
We can look into it.
Karina, I'm wholeheartedly in support of doing what we can within practical limits to deter the high school students from crossing at a non-crossing point. But, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm about to state the obvious, but the fatalities of an accidental nature have all happened at the train depots, to the best of my knowledge, and the fatalities of a non-accidental nature have happened away from the depots. I don't know that there's anything you can do to prevent the latter ultimately if a person is determined to have a conflict of that nature. So what we, I think where we should really focus our efforts are to prevent any accidental fatalities, which would seem to be the depots.
You are, you're absolutely correct. And there are programs that Metra, the Union Pacific are looking into to really address the suicide issues, to educate on that aspect. And as this committee came together, we really wanted to see if there were opportunities to complement the efforts that the schools, that the community task force is taking. And clearly, all of the ideas that we brought, are bringing forward, it's just our alternate opportunities. Again, I think the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee will end up making a recommendation to the city council. And some of these might be short-term, and some of these may be long-term, and some of these may never, never happen. But I think as long, as long as we can do the most due diligence that we can, identify any and all opportunities, that, that might be a good way to, to keep moving forward.
Karina, I see Norm Carlson standing there, and I would like to recognize Norm, because I don't know how many in the public understand this, but Norm is probably one of the foremost experts on rail and railroading in the entire United States, and we were very fortunate to have him on our, on our committee. And Norm, we spoke earlier today, but do you have some comments, I know in regards to the UP and the efforts they're making?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to recognize that Mayor Cowhee has taken a leadership role in the work that we are doing in railroad safety. And at his suggestion, in July of 2010, we held a joint seminar at the Northwestern University Transportation Center. As a result of that, Amtrak approached Northwestern to study pedestrian fatalities in the Chicago area. And I will just highlight the information, and I think later on, we would like to get into this a little bit deeper. The data covers 2004 to 2010. In that period of time, there were 260 pedestrian fatalities in the Chicago area, defined as the Metra area. There were nine pedestrian fatalities to every one vehicle fatality in this period of time. That is the exact reverse of the national experience. Alderman Edelman, to address your question, thirty-one, excuse me, 23% of the deaths take place at stations and crossings. Thirty-one percent of the deaths are trespassing. While we have been focusing on high school students, the problem is adults. And the education that we need to undertake is the real problem, and railroad trespassing is adults. Railroad rightaways are private property, even those rightaways that are owned by Metra, and the rightaway here in the east part of town is owned by Union Pacific. They own the property, and they are very interested in making safety enhancements in town. Irrespective of the fact that we have been focused on a certain class of incidents here later, the larger problem is the trespassing. In Illinois, the average trespasser is 40 to 65 years old. Students represent only 10% of the trespassing incidents. The categories are 41 to 65 is 34% of the incidents, and 19 to 40% is 35% of the incidents. Again, the experience in Chicago is a little bit different than it is elsewhere. Elsewhere, the experiences, the adults are the trespassers, but they tend to be in their 20s and 30s, as opposed to the 40s and 50s here in this part of the, the country, or this part of the Illinois. Eighty-three percent of the deaths occur on the passenger routes. It's the speed of the trains. Lake County is the second highest area of incidents of the counties that comprise the metro area. The Milwaukee North Line, which is the line through the west part of town, has the most incidents of any of the 11 lines in the metro system. Unfortunately, of villages and cities of 10,000 and more population, Lake Forest is number four in the number of incidents. Number one is Barrington, number two is La Grange, number three is Villa Park, and number four is Barrington. I mean, I'm sorry, Lake Forest. I would like to encourage everyone to come out on June 5th to participate in this Operation Lifesaver event. This is not a Metro train, this is a Union Pacific train. It is cars from their business fleet. They are the 1950 Streamliner cars that they have, era cars that they have rehab for business purposes. And I think it would be well-served for us if we had a lot of participation in this event. The train will stop in Lake Forest for the first time ever. It is a round trip up to Kenosha and back. It will take about 90 minutes.
I thank you. I have to bring this meeting to a conclusion because of the time we have to start city council, but there's one question I would like to ask you. You stated there were 260 fatalities, one out of 10 was a car, so nine out of 10 is a pedestrian. So of the 235 pedestrian fatalities, do you have a statistic on what percent were accidental versus what percent of those 235 were intentional?
Well, that's a hard question to answer. We know that 46% were intentional. But some of the accidents that appear to be accidents, we believe are intentional, but it's a very hard call to make.
Any questions quickly from anybody before we...
Norm, do we know what time that is, June 5th? Do they have a...
I will get that out, but I think it's roughly around 11 o'clock, but we are going to get the schedule. And let me just note in passing, the Superintendent of Commuter Services for UP, the number one guy, has been up here, and he is devoting a substantial amount of time, and he is very interested in working with us.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Number five is an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody in the public audience who wishes to comment at all? If not, then I'll have a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, move.